This regular meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order at 6:41 on Tuesday, January 3, 2023. If you do a roll call, Martha? Here?
Here.
Here.
And if we do. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the request for a fiscal officer who does a fine job, I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $173,547.19.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Second by Augustine, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have three sets of minutes to approve here.
Why don't I start with one because you guys won't be able to vote on it? At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Records Commission meeting minutes from 12/20/2022.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the trustee's special meeting for the purpose of a work session from December 13, 2022.
Second.
Second by Asherall, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the trustee's special meeting organizational work session meeting from December 20, 2022.
Second.
Second by Asherall, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
With that, Chief Sattner.
I've got a couple items. First, Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Forward to peaceful and blessed 2023. Trustee approval for the emergency replacement of the Sallyport heater through Precision Mechanical at a total cost of $2,925. This includes the service call and replacement of the heater.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Asherall, all in favor?
Aye.
Trustee approval for the training for the Glock Armors Corps to be held at the Summit County Sheriff's Office in North Canton on February 23, 2023 at a total cost of $250. This is for Sergeant Singleton to attend.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Asherall, all in favor?
Aye.
So all I've got, folks. Thank you. Are you looking to bug out? It's okay with you. Anybody have anything for the chief?
Are you exhausted? You have a busy December?
Last week was a little trying, but.
He spent a lot of time in his car.
Yeah.
Nineteen hours to cover 900 miles to Florida is unbelievable.
Hang on, his gentleman wants to talk to you.
Two quick questions for the chief. Richard Pearl, King Road. First one, how many years have you been a police officer?
It will be 37 and a half years next year.
And in your career as a police officer, have you ever or how many tickets have you written for littering? Approximately?
Two or three probably over the years.
Okay, thank you.
Don Gratz, Arbor Crest Drive. I'd like to see if we could set up a meeting where we could get some assistance. There've been some emails sent to get some enforcement in our neighborhood and there's been lack of response.
Where the, you know, outside of my.
Arbor Crest.
I'm aware of that, but I've traded emails with Jim over, you know, the last several months. And we've identified the problem and we have been up there sitting in the development. And Mike and I have to go up and identify a place to put additional speed limit signs in, but there's a process to that. You know, the folks have to come out and make sure that we're not cutting into gas lines, electrical lines and so forth. So as time allows, we will, we will get that done.
Right. I've sent some emails because I'm the new president now.
Okay.
And I look for a response.
Absolutely. And where did you send those? Because I.
To you directly.
Which email address?
I'd have to look it up.
Okay, if it went to the chief of police, then it may have got caught up in the junk mail filter.
I can look and let you know, I think it was D. Center.
Okay. I will certainly check again tomorrow morning. I don't recall getting an email from you.
Yeah, I'd just like to see a response, that's all.
Absolutely, and I, I take care of that. I don't, you know, I don't ignore the residents for sure.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Anybody else?
Very good.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you. Have a good evening. You too.
You too, chief.
Hi, chief. Hi, chief. Hi. Good evening, everybody. First is request for resolutions pointing the following to firefighter dependency fund for 2023. Trustee Asherall, trustee Sweattick, fire chief Justin Grossma, acting assistant chief Sean Barrett, and police chief Setner. These were the same as last year. And the firefighter dependency board handles if there's a line of duty death in the fire department, they make sure the families, the family of the fallen firefighter receives their, their funding from the state.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Augustine, all in favor?
Aye.
It's a resolution, so we do a roll call.
Okay, local.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Asherall?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
The next, I have two slight changes because of the pay increase that we, was approved tonight. So request motions, motion to move firefighter paramedic Noah Millman from the basic EMT pay of 1576 per hour to the medic rate of 1854 hour effective January 8. He passed his paramedic program and has been cleared to start operating as a paramedic.
Is that what we talked about, Martha?
Yep, payroll, period, yep.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Second by Augustine, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is request appropriations for $1,396.50 for our preventive maintenance of our four auto exication tools through Hallow Rescue.
So moved.
Second. No, no, they, that's, they come out and handle it all.
Second by Augustine, all in favor?
Aye. Um, I meant to ask you this earlier when we talked, like, one of the five times today. Um, would we like to make a motion tonight or would we like to have discussion about moving Sean instead of acting assistant chief to assistant chief? We had said, um, that was going to be in January, January.
I was, what I was trying to do, well, what I remember, what I was looking to do is when we have the new lieutenants in place, so they're all, everybody becomes it. So we have one.
Okay.
One formal ceremony for all three.
I'm hoping that's going to be in February.
That'll be, should be, the, I, the chiefs are on board with everything. I just got to schedule the timeframe to do the assessments, but it should be the first Tuesday in February.
Okay.
If you, if the board's okay with that.
Works for me.
I think we should probably go into executive session to discuss that. Doesn't have to happen today, but.
Okay. Nope. Does anybody else have anything for the fire chief? Chief, if you'd like to go, you're.
Yes, thank you very much. Everybody be safe.
Have a good night.
I don't have anything tonight to bring up. All's quiet up in the service garage right now, so.
Thank you for your work over the holidays with the storm that came in and for all of your staff. We appreciate you.
You want to knock on wood, saying it's quiet right now in January?
Well, the town day looks good as of right now.
And you continue to just jinx yourself.
You need to know the weather. You just called Mike.
We watch it. No, I don't believe so. All quiet. Don't have anything to bring up with me.
All right. Very good. Anybody have anything for service department? Takers, if you'd like to leave, you're accused. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Anything for zoning?
No, sir.
Cemetery?
No, sir.
Always a good day when there's nothing for cemetery. And trustee Augustine?
We had a motion on the floor at the last meeting on December 20th with regard to the zoning fee schedule. And we had fences. There was conversation about being over six feet in height. I had Tom Wilson, the inspector, email both of you. According to the new language, it's just fences in general. It doesn't have a height requirement. It's a structure now, so it, there's a service, there's a fee that's incorporated with that.
But I think we could waive that for fee, fees under, no?
The way the text reads, we cannot.
You can have no fee.
Yeah, the text doesn't set the fee.
The fee is a separate document.
But it's considered a structure, so it's not a no fee anymore.
May I approach podium?
Please.
Thank you.
Martha Cathcart Wood, 501 East Switto Road. So it is ludicrous to make our residents come in and apply for a fee to put up any type of fence. I understand it if you consider it a structure, but you do not have to apply a fee to it just because it's a structure. I mean, that, it, Tom will be going out constantly and residents are not going to be happy. And how are you going to, if, are you going to assess the same fee for someone who's putting up a decorative picket fence as someone who's enclosing six acres for a horse farm? I mean, is he going to have to go out there and is he going to have to measure the setbacks and the distance of all these fences? I mean, I, hmm?
He does do that.
He does it now?
Yes, he's measuring fences.
Well, I think it's ridiculous and that is my comment on this.
Well, he, he is going out. He is taking care of this regularly. That's why I had him email that you, both of you, that if you had any questions prior to the meeting, that you could have spoken to him directly.
No, I saw that, but I am not inclined to have somebody pay a fee. If you put a little garden fence up, you know, that's, that's ridiculous to saddle a resident with that fee for that.
I, I think when you're talking about like a white picket fence or a split rail fence, I mean, to me, that's kind of not really very different than putting up shrubs that can kind of act as the same thing. I just, I don't think that it should be a structure.
But our zoning inspector is going out and doing all of the things that go with a structure, an accessory.
Is, is actually going out and because, I tell you, I put up a split rail fence not too long ago. I didn't see Tom measuring my. I mean, I'm not quite sure how Tom even knows anybody's putting up a fence if they're not coming in and have the requirement of having to apply for a permit.
That's the same with anything else, right? A gazebo, a hot tub?
That type of fence. The reason that there even is in the code is because Medina County, anything over six foot is a, has to be structurally sound and looked at because it could injure someone if it's not built accurately. But if we're talking about a picket fence, a horse fence, a split rail fence, I mean, we could, we could describe a multitude of different fences. If a split rail falls off a fence, it's not going to crush someone. There is no need to have staff or office or a resident have to come in and go through that. It, again, it is utterly ridiculous to me.
I'm not going to bring it up until both of the trustees talk to Tom Wilson, so we'll go past that. Um, I'd like to schedule dates for interviews for the zoning positions.
Can I ask you one more thing about that, though? What is the status of the current zoning fee schedule? Is it still in limbo or is it, is it, have you approved?
The last one from the last meeting. Last one from the last meeting is specific to $75 over six feet tall.
Well, I don't think the trustees approved that, did they?
Yes. But we don't have the minutes.
No, I don't think the minutes have anything to do with it.
We agreed to six feet in height.
We had the same conversation at that point and discussed that there, again, in, am I going to talk about?
Well, my.
Experience or anything else like that, but it's utter, this, this is ludicrous fee.
I'm sorry. Well, the trustees agree with you. So what I'm saying to you is based on my memory, it was $75 for over six feet in height was what was agreed upon at the last meeting.
Okay, I, I.
I may be wrong.
Oh, look, but I don't think it was ever approved.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to the scheduled dates for the interviews for the zoning positions, which are now January 3 to the 13th. And I wanted to get some dates on the calendar for when we can go ahead with the interviewing process. So do you have a preference or do you?
Do you want to do it before, um, before the meeting on the 17th?
I cannot do it before the meeting on the 17th. Would have to be after, would have to be 5:30 or later. Now, I could if, depending on how many we get.
I was going to say, can we tentatively do 5:30 and see what happens?
We could.
And, you know, I was actually thinking about this and I wanted to talk to both of you about it with, if we have anybody that applies for the zoning alternate positions of the ones that we just interviewed last month, do you feel it necessary to interview them again for the same?
Yes, because I didn't, I wasn't here for all the interviews.
Okay, but the ones that you were here for? I think you were not here for Cindy and Tom. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and I think part of John's.
Okay. So do we feel it necessary to bring back Eric and Nikki if they apply?
I, I think it would be a good idea. If we're going to have Bill Spellman come in and have to be a part of the interview process, if he wants to be a part of the alternate position for the zoning commission and has to do that process, I think everyone should have to do the same process.
I think that's going to be difficult then to get it done at 5:30. I, and the reason I think that Jack said he wanted Bill to come in is because we've never interviewed Bill. We all just interviewed, at, at minimum, we all just interviewed less than a month ago, Eric and Nikki. But that's fine if you guys want to bring them back in. I just think it's going to be difficult to get it done. And, I mean, because it's three positions that we're looking to fill.
Well, let's see how many apps that we do get.
But we're setting it now. We're going to.
The tentative date is.
We're not telling them.
5:30. It's just a tentative date. We're not creating a special meeting just yet. We'll see how many we, we get.
Okay.
We'll have adequate time to let the public know in between the 13th and the 17th, if that's the date we choose.
So we're going to say the 17th at 5:30?
Correct. And then Martha, did you want us to create an effective date for the new pay rates?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what is, what date is that?
The next payroll, which would be January 20th.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion.
I'm sorry, January 17th.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that all pay rates, new pay rates, according to the organizational meeting minutes, are effective on January 17th, 2023.
Second.
Second by Asherall, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have?
Very good.
Okay, um, just to let you both know this, you know, I talked to Lynn today about that new role that she's going to be taking on the web administrator and programmer. And I know we had talked in the past about extending office hours up front. And she was thinking if she could work Monday still nine to one on Mondays and Tuesdays and Wednesdays, she would be here from one until five, so we could extend our office hours that were open to the public and then remain Friday nine to one. She would like to plan for Thursdays being off, but she said that would be a day that she could work remote if it was approved by the board. And she said when she's thinking remote, she's thinking like one hour, two at the max, and that's not going to be a weekly thing. And we could also put it based on trustee approval or liaison approval.
This was one of the things in the handbook that we didn't agree on was the remote working.
Yes. Well, first of all, I wanted to talk about the hours. If you are both good with the hours. Yep, Monday, nine till one. Tuesday and Wednesday, she would be here from one until five. And Friday from nine until one.
And Thursday remote.
As needed.
If needed.
She would like to plan for Thursday being off. And she said she's obviously flexible with that because sometimes she would have to come in to town hall on Thursdays. Other days, if there's just some stuff that could be done on the website or some research that could be done, she could do that hybrid. And we can talk more about that role, but I wanted to talk to you guys about the hours and see your thoughts on the hours with that.
Is, is there that much involved that she needs that time?
Not always, not always, but she said, um, and she, that's why we're saying not every Thursday. But she said, um, you know, like she's been researching plugins right now with like the banners and like the capabilities of what it can do, what it cannot do. And it's easier if she's at home to do that because she doesn't have the disruptions and the interruptions of the phone ringing and the front door opening, which I certainly understand. And then also another option is, you know, if she ever has to do work session minutes, she can YouTube it at home and do it that way. Which to Melissa's point, we can talk more about that when we are doing the handbook again. But that was, I just wanted to bounce that off of both of you, what we were thinking, because I know you said you would be okay with it on very small basis.
Limited, yes.
Yeah. So that was kind of what we were thinking, but I wanted to let you guys know with the extended hours, since we are the first week of January, that that's something that we can offer to our public is that our office would be open until five o'clock two days a week.
There's overlaps in here where she's with Suzanne still, right?
Mm-hmm.
So in my mind, you know, one or the other during those times when there's overlaps, they cannot be bothered by the door if they don't have to, you know. They work, they work it out together so that they have time to do the kind of things you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I would prefer to see. Again, with, with the provision that if there are certain things on an occasional basis, I would be open to that.
Okay.
So have we approached this topic with Suzanne?
What topic?
Of the hours.
No.
The extended. I would like to hear what Suzanne has to say on that, too.
Well, Suzanne, I, I've talked to Suzanne in the past about it and Suzanne didn't feel that we needed to extend the hours. And that's why I'm referring to this specifically for the web administrator and programmer. So it's not Suzanne who's going to be working these extended hours. It's going to be, Lynn is going to flex her time and move for hours around.
Right, but she is also helping Suzanne a lot.
Right, but that was something that we agreed to in that last work session meeting, which is what we just agreed to in the organizational meeting, is that she's not the administrative assistant's assistant now. She's, she's her own role. Right, she's, she has her own role now.
Right.
That, that's secondary. Anything that she's doing to assist with Suzanne is secondary. So, no, this was not discussed with Suzanne. So moving on, that was just for conversation.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I would like to make a motion to renew our Zoom contract at an annual fee of $149.90 for the year.
Second.
Second by Augustine, all in favor?
Aye. And apparently we've had a couple residents call in the last couple of weeks regarding the senior snow plowing that we used to offer. It is my understanding through talking to Martha today that that went away a couple of years ago because, last year, because we could not get the drivers to do it. We couldn't get enough drivers to do the plowing. So if that is something that we would want to bring back, can't do it in 2023 because it's so late in the game, but if that's something that we wanted to discuss bringing back in 2024, Martha said in previous years, it was like maybe five or $6,000 that was allocated for that.
But no one bid on it, right? Now, nobody bid on the.
So John calls, he had done it for many, many, many years. And it, they, you know, with his demands of his two businesses and stuff, he was, he had to, you know, come, draw back from that. And I, Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the trustees solicited out to see if any other drivers were interested and they did not get any interested parties.
I sent you the Excel spreadsheet since you're the liaison of all the contractors that I, maybe it was a dark word document of all the contractors that I contacted last year. We couldn't find anyone. It was late in the year and they wouldn't do it for the fee structure that we had composed. They were asking significant higher rates.
That's kind of what I assume. That's what I talked to Martha about today also is it's probably more than doubled.
And that was the thing, was that John was doing it for almost for free and getting calls at four o'clock on Christmas morning saying, I need my driveway cleared for people to come to my house and he was trying to open gifts with his kids.
It's not just getting somebody there, it's the, the time constraints.
So, um, I take that to mean wish we could, but we cannot.
Well, it's worth looking into. I don't know if that, because the Fire Association really is a mechanism that's utilized for it. Maybe they can do some research and determine if it's.
Well, they're basically, their participation's been very helpful, but they are.
Mr. Pearl wants, Mr. Pearl wants to fire up his Cub Cadet. I can tell. Yes, sir.
Martha may, may or may not remember this or agree with me, but going back 25 years, maybe even a little longer, the reason for offering this was because there's a lot of seniors that either don't go out when it snows heavy and/or don't plow their driveways. And the issue was can 911 get to their door? So I'd like you to continue to think about that.
Well, there's a few things since then that have occurred.
Okay.
Bill Horton is a wonderful program.
I'm sorry, who?
Bill, Bill Horton initiated the program.
Right.
His term, oh, in the 90s.
Right.
And the wonderful program. But we were informed, Ray and lady of name Ryan Garoppa and I, that we were, that program as implemented was not statutorily allowable. So because you have to do it for health safety and exactly, so we, we did find a way utilizing the 501(c) organization of the Firemen's Association. In the interim, when Tim Potts became fire chief of the department, he made sure that there's a plow on the pickup truck. And that way, if the, to address the point that you raised there, that if there is an emergency call, the department has the ability to go out and clear the access. Now, again, we could want to do what all we, you know, we could add a desire to provide it for our residents, but it becomes difficult when prices start to double and you can't find contractors who will work within the framework of what the budget will allow.
Does the plow go with the ambulance unit?
If the weather is inclement, it has, yeah.
I spoke with Jess today about that and he. I spoke with Jess today about that, and he told me he puts the plow on the truck if he knows that snow is coming. He'll put it on there. And that's the only time, because they were plowing people's driveways, people saying, oh, my mom's got a doctor's appointment. I can't get out. And they had people, just two years ago, I think he said, they had someone calling and complaining to them because they didn't tell them there was a turn in the driveway, so their, their yard got messed up. So they said it's become such a thing that if it's an emergency call and the ambulance has to get there, they're going to plow it, but
When you say truck, what truck?
It's a pickup truck.
Oh, okay.
350, 250.
The problem, too, was that it's a ticketed system, so they would call, they would have so many tickets, the elderly, that they would have to, could utilize. And it was very random. It wasn't like you're going to be plowed on this day at this time, or when the storm was coming in, we're going to come plow, we're going to come through one, two, three passes. It was, I've got a doctor's appointment. I need you to come in the next 30 to 45 minutes. And then, you know, the contractor is already out, maybe much further away. It was a very difficult task for them to get here in a timely manner.
The other point is that it was, it was income-based. So it wasn't so much, you had to be a certain age to do it, but there was also an income qualifier. And over the last few years, the, the number of people who even applied for it became less and less. Now, that's no, you know, there's no justification in stopping it, but I'm just saying that as our community changes. Whereas I think when I started in 2008, I think we had about 72 people took advantage of the program. And if I'm not mistaken, and Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't even think there were 50 or 40 last year.
I think it would be 25.
Yeah, it was, I mean, it had just dwindled down now, and, you know, that's kind of a good thing. But to the people who need it, it was provided.
I believe Richfield provides it.
Well, they're, they're a village, and so therefore they have an entirely different system. Yeah, they're not quite the same, and statutorily.
Right.
They have an entirely different
I don't mean to be drivelist, and I don't mean to be rude to anyone, but what I'm hearing is excuses why you can't do it.
No, I'm not making excuses. I'm saying the reality of it. And I don't mean to cut you off, but I want to make clear. It's a great program.
Why are we, why are we talking about this at a town hall meeting?
I actually just said that I think it's worth looking into again.
And that's what I'm asking you.
I did my due diligence last year.
I think it shouldn't be related to cost. Martha has a lot of money to bank.
Not in the general fund. And again, that's
You have a way of doing it. Of moving money.
Not for that function.
I don't want to be drivelous.
Well, no, I want to make it clear because you're making a comment that is accurate or factual.
Okay.
Okay, the only funding that can be used for that purpose is in the general fund. And the general fund supports a multitude of salaries. It supports the 1.3 million dollars of concrete repairs annually. It supports everything between zoning and cemeteries and everything else, and it has provided for the senior snowplow program. So I have no issue with it, but I'm, I'm not going to go as far to say that we should consider putting 20,000, $25,000 annually into a senior snowplow program because as much as I support it and think it has a value, there, there may be 7,500 other residents in this township that would also like their driveway plowed. And that's where the statute comes into play. And that's why we have to be or the trustees have to be mindful as to how the program is implemented and at what limits what parameters they can work within it, which I think is fair and reasonable. We, you know. I, I can say that John did a wonderful job, and he will still, if there's a senior or someone with, you know, an income limitations, and they need their driveway plowed, that man is the same. He will, he will do it.
And he has offered that if there's an emergency, that he would come out and plow.
I'll give the response.
Do you want me to have the Fire Association in the spring, maybe start putting feelers out?
Well, to Martha's point, they're just kind of a way to, to pay for the process so that we meet statute. So in the past, the trustee liaison has done it.
So do we want me?
The trustees have done it, not the liaison. The trustees have worked together on it. Maybe in your experience, last year, you you, you did that.
This is my fifth year sitting here, Martha. It's my fifth year. It's generally been the liaison that has looked into it.
Okay, well.
While I've been here.
Yeah.
We can put a bid out and see if anybody bites.
You can't put a bid out.
It's not a bid project, really.
You have to
It's certainly something to discuss at a work session and get some feelers out there. And the board will have to determine what a reasonable amount per push they would like to solicit.
Tabled to work session.
Okay. At Martha's request, I'd like to make a motion to pay the Greater Akron Chamber annual membership dues in the amount of $440. Second by Asher. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The only other thing I have is just to advise the both of you that don't be meeting with council on Tuesday, the 10th regarding the police sergeant's contract.
Cheers, man.
Yeah. Martha, you have on here a motion to pay Columbia gas bills electronically?
We addressed that at the organization.
Is that the one we did?
Yeah, thank you very much.
And fund status?
Fund status is currently at $5,919,529.57. Of which $1,082,236.76 are in full investments and $4,837,292.81 are in primary checking.
Very good.
Thank you, Martha.
Did, we already did the bills for you.
Thank you.
Talking about payroll, correct? Any questions from the public, comments?
Who said that? I heard that.
It was rather loud, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was probably intentionally.
He does his stage whisper.
Cindy Engelmann, Ridge Road, I just wanted to ask when I would be sworn in for zoning commissions. The first meeting is Thursday. Will that be Thursday?
I'd do it probably at the meeting.
Okay, just wanted to let, no.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Nothing for the good of the order. We can make a motion to adjourn this meeting at 7:20 PM.
Second.
Second by Asher. All in favor?
Aye.